Uh town council meeting for Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four to the border at six thirty.
I pledge allegiance to the father of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh next is the approval of the agenda. Pro call, Grand Elbow, Councilmember Scott Dick.
President.
Councilmember Lance Miller.
President.
Councilmember David Rudd. Councilmember Rex Waters the third.
President.
Councilmember Andy Wilson. President. Alright, let's try that again. Next, we will the agenda.
Motion for the agenda.
Second, right? Any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, aye? Okay, next is the approval of the consent agenda.
Need a correction, please. Okay, so on the consent agenda, as council will, we'll approve all of the minutes on twelve thirty twenty-four, our closeout meeting. So we would take the minutes off of there. And also, just an explanation, Mitchell and Stark. On the back, under number three, Mitchell and Stark dispersment request number twenty-three. It was submitted from our financial consultants at four eighty-six, five seventy-seven. And we received an email from SRF, State Revolving Loan Fund, that we're doing our sewer project through, that this amount should be five hundred thirteen thousand, six oh nine. Okay, and the difference is the retainage. So they use the retainage in there. So just those two.
Okay, okay. Alright, um is there a motion for the approval consent agenda of those changes?
I'm against that motion.
Oh, so I'm against that motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, aye? Alright, uh next is the insurance renewal presentation.
Okay, well, I'm gonna let Mike take it.
Hi, I'm John, uh I'm Mike Shaw, uh I'm a partner with, uh like from the insurance renewal for you guys. Uh I've been doing it for you guys for how many years now? Fifty or twenty years?
Oh, a long, long time.
Wow, so probably before you and I were doing this.
Yeah.
Uh so, uh big thanks to Sammy for putting up with our questions, because we're able to market out for you guys this year. Um I'm happy to go as much detail, as little detail as you want. I just came from a meeting where I talked insurance for two hours. If you want me, I can. Um I don't think you do though. Um but if you want, I'm happy to. Uh big picture. We, we have two options for you guys this year. Uh one was a Trident public risk with who you guys were with last year. And then the other one's Tokyo Marine HCC. Uh what we put in front of you guys today, uh ended up for a meeting was the Tokyo Marine one, um because that's our recommendation. Um the big difference between the two, the Trident one, uh was gonna be a little bit higher premium. Uh I think it was gonna be about a hundred thousand dollars in premium. Um it's gonna be a little, a little lower deductibles. Where ACC is at, uh seventy thousand dollars in premium, for a little bit higher. Uh specifically, I think we're talking about, um mostly five thousand dollar deductibles instead of a thousand. Uh looking back at your guys' losses, I think the most in the last five years, you would have paid more deductibles, uh was gonna be fourteen thousand dollars. Um up, up to five years. Most of the other ones are all saving. Uh you weren't gonna pay more than five, I guess, based on the previous experience. So. Saving the extra thirty grand, that's kind of the route I wanted to go. Um ACC's really good company, you guys used to be with them actually. Um and I think we've kind of switched it back and forth depending on uh how the market's gone. So, um. Happy to go into more detail. You have Cyber in front of you too. Uh that's the exact same as it was last year. I think same premium too, same coverage, just basically the same thing you guys have. So, um. Happy to answer any kind of questions you guys might have. Um or if you guys want to keep going on in the meeting, we'll have to do that too, so.
And I noted that compared to last year's premium, or. It, this is a decrease of seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars from last year. That doesn't happen.
Definitely.
Two days ago, I had one that was twenty-seven percent increase. Um so far, my worst so far this month has been a four hundred twenty-five percent increase. Um this is probably my second decrease, so. We like that. As a mark on.
So, they need to make a motion to accept.
And that we can go ahead and write the checks for this January one day. For any lines.
All in favor of making a motion? Okay, is there a second?
Oh, I'll start the motion to approve the sure.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, aye?
Hey, you guys, uh if you have any questions, so as you look through it, uh different times, you're free to reach out. I'm ready to answer anything you guys might have.
Alright, great, thank you.
To approve the insurance and allow for them to write the check, the clerk's office, right? Thank you, guys. Sorry, it was a bit short.
No, I'll do it.
Sounds good.
Will you let him know that it's been taken care of?
Next is the per credit report.
Okay, so did anyone have any questions on the monthly financials? And also, um we're happy to report that this afternoon, Andy and I signed closing papers for the loan for the boom truck. So the boom truck will be delivered tomorrow, so we're excited about that. I know Robin is, so it'll be here tomorrow. And um they came here to uh close the loan, so that was very good for us. We did get the four years. And we did get the four point two six five percent interest. We make our first payment in February. So, very good. And um not to forget the additional appropriations hearing for twenty-four. That is on December twenty-sixth, so the day after our holiday at ten AM. And so we need to make sure that we have a quorum for that, because we had to advertise it. We have, we adopt the appropriation resolution. And then we can end, end the year the way we're supposed to. And also, on December thirtieth is the closeout of the books. So we have to do that, take those out for everything that we've done, and that's it. So just reminding you. Okay? And so I'm working on lots of different projects to close the year out. It's been very, it's always very, very busy, but I enjoy it, so. It's okay. So that's it.
Thank you. Uh next is the monthly department reports. Department, somebody here from the fire department? No? Okay, I'm in the police department.
Uh on the monthly report, uh as far as our. So calls, there, I think as you'll notice, if you've handled the last one, they were a significant amount, and I went through that kind of securities because our. Career sign kind of died off during that. Pretty much what I came up with, what I've noticed in a lot of these. Uh, it's like the numbers, Penner Turner came back, that would be, that would be on the second of last month, and she's been field trained with Lieutenant Horn, who's been doing pro active, so. I believe that that accounts for most of the numbers being given up. For our monthly report, uh particularly that if I highlighted there on, on the traffic board, it's um quite a bit higher, and that's all attributed to the field training. Not all true, it's due to the increases to field training, the additional. Yes, have any questions on the monthly report? Uh the next thing I have up is the hiring of Jessica Bolland. I don't know if everybody got a chance to read the packet. Um Jess has been able to get her certification, where she now qualifies. Um I'd like to be able to hire Jess, uh effective the, I believe it was the third that we came up with, it was the third of January. When that would round out our full-time positions.
The beginning of a payday.
Yeah. Uh and then, any questions on Jess? I don't know if everybody knows Jess, but. Well known. Uh the other uh thing I have.
They need to make a motion.
Oh.
They need to make a motion to approve the hiring, sorry.
All in favor of saying aye?
Alright.
Aye, all opposed, aye?
Sorry about that.
Um the other thing is the leave time proposal. Um as we talked about, several of us have talked about the leave time and the creation of the overabundance of hours and. I did some research on that, as I put it into the packet about what the other town employees get it. Um a couple of other uh research over in town, Prince Lacey Police Department. To find out what the time that they get. So I pretty much rounded one up that I had submitted. That gives us a little bit better than any of those three, but not to the extreme that we've been at. Uh I know that a couple of guys here tonight, that uh have seen something they'd like to say about the leave proposal. I don't know if they can speak now, or. Or if it's for that.
Yeah, I came over here from the terrorist department, I was under the agreement that I get twenty-eight days vacation. That's what they, you will be over here, that's what they offered me, that's what they signed off on. And that's why I came, under a twelve-hour shift. There's a big difference between a twelve-hour shift and an eight-hour shift. Uh to me, a day is a day. You give me twenty-eight days, I give you twenty days off. With this proposal, I'm gonna lose twelve vacation days. Uh four personal days and four person, uh four sick days. Well, I gotta take a day and a half off to get a full day versus the hours. If you convert things to our hours, you get eight-hour days, eight hours on the base, twenty-eight days and eight hours. We, we did get what we got last few years, and with this, you're, you're taking days away from us. Either, well, I know you understand you had to write a big check last payday. Those hours were carried over, but I propose don't allow us to carry them over, use them for a reason. The coverage is gonna be there. We have a working chief now. It wasn't in the past, we didn't have a working chief when we were short two feet. Now we're full staff, we got a working chief. If, I mean, Mike work opposite shifts. If, if I'm off, Kenny's gonna be here. If Mike takes a day off, Kenny's gonna be here through the week. Only thing that would be covered is Saturday and Sunday, when we got reserves, and Mike is a part-time, he's gonna be begging for hours all year long. And, and Benny always, every time I took a Sunday off, Benny always covered for me. We just all get paid off at the same time, no. But one person at a time, i- it should, we should have no problem, under my, my opinion anyway.
So I guess we're asking that we, when we take this into consideration, that, you know, it's, it's, it's a day for a day, not. You know, okay, you can, you can pay eight days, but the twenty-eight hour days, which, you know, you heard, we lose.
Eight-hour days equals two hundred and twenty-four hours, and I'm ready to flex that to it on ours. We've been getting twenty-eight days of the working twelve-hour shift, three hundred and thirty-six hours. If you're, also, we're losing twelve vacation days, two personal days and four sick, so it's even sick days. Everybody, you know, I guess we're getting twelve sick days a year, that's the policy. Well, all the eight-hour people will get twelve vacation or twelve sick days if they're sick. We're only gonna get four. Right, I'm sorry. You know, we can't, so we gotta take off for an eight-hour sick day to come in for four, make it even out, if we're set a blue or whatever. If this, and like I said, we were brought over here with a promise, I, I thought it was in writing, so I made sure, probably before I agreed to come over here. For the salary and the, the vacation days. But money don't mean nothing to me, in my point of view. I like to have my paid days off, I need to have a paid day off for vacation. I've got two young kids. Uh I, I do things through the summer. We got spring break and fall break and family vacation, and uh that's why I wanted to move here for a little bit.
What, what were the days like with the sheriff's department?
I had twenty-five days over there by that. And that's what Heather asked. I, I was wanting the same, like, well, he gave me my vacation days and close to my salary. I'll come over here. She went to the board. They, they asked her how many vacation days I got, and she told me twenty-five, and Nancy said, well, just give him twenty-eight. And that's all we got, and I made sure she said it was, Heather told me it was in writing, under the twelve-hour shift, one hour, and. Trying my two weeks and over there to come over.
So that, it, it, there was the lure for both of us. So listen, you're gonna get twenty-eight, twenty-eight days. Come home. And you know what? Uh I, it's a pretty good deal. But so, but now, now, well, you know, there's a back title, and I get the money lost, uh doing it that way. But before, we didn't have, we, we, we never had full coverage for the shifts. In fact, in January, that third, we'll have full coverage. Uh so, um you know, most of the, most of, obviously, we're not gonna have twenty-four hour coverage, but we're gonna be real close. Closer than we've ever been.
And you can't consider a twelve-hour shift kind of same as an eight-hour shift, though. I mean, this doesn't work out. Everything else in your policies can work out, but as far as. Workdays and vacation days. It doesn't work out yet. And we're, there will be, there'll be only four of us who work a twelve-hour shift. And the, the police department should be separate, that's why the sheriff's department is over there, as far as their vacation is totally separate to the county. Because they work a twelve-hour shift.
Is, is there a provision, I guess, uh salary, salary table for the rollover, right? And we've got. Uh officers that have a lot, lot of rollover days.
It's in the town policy.
Okay, would, would you guys be okay if they had a rollover policy? Is there any problem with that?
You can take them at the end of the year if we don't use them, I don't care.
Yeah, let's say you roll over two hundred hours or something.
That's really a lot to roll over now. I mean, I'd be happy with double, I mean, I think I, I need all my ice drinks in your seven days.
I mean, if it, I mean, if it comes to the point where, uh you know, I, I truly believe that with the full staff. That we'll be able to use the twenty-eight. I mean, if we can't, it's our own fault. Uh we just have to work a straight between all of us, uh you know, what, when our vacations are gonna be.
Last two years were just unusual, because well, that was very, you know, a problem she's created. She created this whole watch. By letting this roll, she let Mike roll over all the heavy hours last year. I think I only rolled over like three days. But that's where you, we got the holder, letting you guys, or talking guys into letting hours roll. You know, and then they don't give you that much, and you wanted to pay. Luckily, we had the money to pay it up. Now, January first, we start fresh. And just put in something that if you don't use them, you lose. But I'll be satisfied with that. And by, I said, I, I haven't used all mine in both years, but that's my own fault. But I had enough to do the things I wanted to do throughout the year with the kids and. I just passed tournaments, fair enough, I had to get a day, had to take a day off for that or whatever. And I said, the only time stuff wasn't covered, because Heather wouldn't work, she wouldn't work a shift. Or whatever, that's where we ran in a bunch of the overtime. When Mike, when she suspended Mike, and she wasn't showing up for work, I was the only one in the whole park working. Well, I ate a bunch of that overtime, somebody had to be here. But now, Kenny's here, he says he's gonna work shifts, or will take calls, but he's here through the week. I mean, if I take off Monday, Tuesday, Kenny's here. You know, and we don't work, me and Mike don't work the same days. So when he's not here, when he's off, I'm working, when I'm working, he's off. And I think it'll work out, right? I would say the only exception would be Saturdays and Sundays, which you have, you got Mike morning, he's gonna be begging for hours. And, and Kenny or Benny, it was covered by Sundays, remember I took a Sunday off?
Then he's still covering. Then he's still covering the same.
Yeah, he's, he's coming now, and there's people here, I mean, we, otherwise, they, he, I'm, he's coming up here, he told me he's covering it all. To work out the rest of my day, he's still paying, right? I mean, I, you can grandfather us or whatever, but, okay, I don't think it's fair, you come over here and. Uh you start taking days away, apparently, because Heather let roll over, and then we all these hours back to. That's not our fault.
Yeah, and I'm afraid this monster. And on the, on the proposal that I've given yet, and the reason that I even started making these proposals, and I've talked to the guys about. The fact that if you, on the current policy, the way it sits now, uh with these guys, for the twenty-year guys, it works out, when you've been, you had their. Comp days and vacation days to be a little over four hundred hours a year, which if you break that down into what, a forty-hour week, working is that becomes like a. Ten weeks off a year, which is hard to overcome, uh the ten weeks off a year. So I talked to the guys, and I thought we were in agreement that they didn't wanna do eight-hour shifts. If we do eight-hour shifts and you get twenty-eight days a year off, it becomes manageable. You can talk about having somebody off twenty-eight days if you're only working eight-hour days. On the, and I think the confusion a lot of times lies in the twelve-hour days, you work fourteen days a month. So if you're able to take fourteen days off, then you're taking four weeks off.
What do you see then, you're having average days?
I'll, I've always done twelve since I started, uh you know, police officer, I, I liked the twelve.
I, I like the twelve, but I'll work any hour.
I, I mean, I, I don't think we can cover with the eights, you're gonna have eight hours a day that's not covered. You won't be worried about covering shifts. There's gonna be an eight-hour gap where it's not gonna be.
Right now, doing the twelves, we're only gonna have about four hours not covered.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are different ways to do the eight-hour shifts, but it's just, uh, like I said, when you do, when, when you say days, then. Then you have the mindset that five days is forty hours a week, and then you're doing twelves, and you have that. Thirty-three percent addition in leave time, that's kind of hard to overcome.
What about splitting it to two hundred hours?
That, we'll make whatever.
You have two hundred hours, that would, I think, if my math is right, it was twenty-five days.
No.
Twenty-eight days is three hundred and thirty-six hours. That's what, that's what we'd be getting the last three years. Three hundred and thirty-six hours, every January first, we begin three hundred and thirty-six hours of vacation. And you guys have sick or personal days, six of those is seventy-two hours, and with the twelve sick days, that's a hundred and forty-four hours. With, you go on, you're making the eight-hour days, you get our shift, we're gonna go with. About three hundred and thirty-six hours of vacation to come call. We're twenty-eight days, right? And then forty-eight hours of personal time, ninety-six hours of sick time.
But if you add all, but, but you add that together with your sick leave, which I hadn't even thought of, now you're at over five hundred hours a year off, and only work two thousand hours a year, if you work every day.
Difference, we're gonna lose nine vacation days, two personal, and four sick days. Of both the twenty, vacation days and the vacation. Six personal, four twelve-sick day days. I mean, I, I think a day's a day, a day, but if you work an eight-hour shift or a twelve-hour shift, we just have to work twelve. You know, some merchant kind of, especially on, on the sick days.
And the regular, the rest do. The years of service, is that years of service as a police officer, or years of service with the town?
As a police officer.
Years of experience. Years of experience of.
Right, yeah, that's how they had it set up.
And when I got here, Heather had me write it up, and as far as I know, you all passed it. I won't give the ordinance or not, but she had me write up some kind of vacation policies, and bereavement, bereavement, sick and. Personal. I think you all agree on everything but the sick.
So you wrote the current policy?
I was asking for, to see if that was what I wrote, but I haven't seen it, and I don't work that, or where. Supposedly, it was passed by the other board. Now, look for the ordinance, I didn't see the ordinance, I just saw it or heard it, and Brandon told me that it was voted on and passed, but it wasn't actual.
Right, it wasn't an ordinance, it was just like one sheet of paper from the back.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It would be in the minutes.
And the full town policy doesn't address the police department specifically. Which, and it would be kind of hard to fit us into the one that's here, just generically, because it doesn't, it would leave us out of holiday, and we, we work on the holidays, which is why I have. The holiday date built into the one that I can probably.
You have to, I mean, county does, they separate their eight-hour regular employees from the sheriff's department. The employees, that all, I mean, all the childrens over there work twelves, and I, I think everybody on there works except this factory, twelve-hour shifts. And their vacation and, so it's all set up different than, than the regular eight-hour shift from the other county board, in the town.
Like, see what the county's, you know, policy is and all that.
And they're on a matrix over there, last, like, when I was over there, they were on a matrix, and I maxed out, I was maxed out in twenty-five days.
Right, but I know, but they also don't let people ladder into it.
It, uh, I don't, you don't.
We're all new brand employees here, if we were on their, you would have to serve that twenty years at that agency to get, to get. To the top of this.
They don't, they don't hire anybody, you know, that's a ladder or above that, but if they're, so Mike, so we hired him, what did they give you after that? Same as, do you guy?
I don't remember.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to take a look at the other county has, and then talk a little bit more about this, while we. Go forward to make a decision on it, but. Because I understand what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying too, I get it.
Yeah, and it's purely a financial decision to, to be made by the board, it's, um, it just depends on where you wanna be on. You know, how much you're gonna. Essentially, it changes somebody's payroll when you have leave time, so.
You know?
But I think if you, you know, you have the twenty-eight days, even, you know, sticking with the twelve-hour shifts, uh you know, if, if, if you don't use it, you lose.
And I have an eight-hour.
Guys don't have a realistic check at the end of the year.
Yeah.
And it's our fault if we don't use it.
And I think it is realistic to think about doing the eight-hour shift, and it just clears up all the muddy blockers. I think, and, I was a couple, COI brought me an hour shift over, we talked about it a little bit, so.
Okay. Well, we've got a little bit more. Yeah, we take those next notch, Kenny.
That's what you guys want to choose to do, sure.
When you bring them.
Did you make those in tables, or you're gonna stay with the table yet?
Yeah.
To table, to table.
Okay. Okay, hold on, how we. And get there, uh, they need to pass security here.
Check some other departments.
Yeah. Right.
And also, there's two new policies that I mentioned that I'll provide to you.
Okay.
I don't.
Uh town administration.
Uh Phyllis is on vacation tonight, but um we've been working on. Hold on, my calls. Uh we've been working on the right-of-way permit. We, we had another utility company come in and do some work, and, and we realized that we weren't equipped. To do what they wanted to do. So with MS Consultants, uh we worked with them about. The right-of-way, updating the right-of-way permit from the nineteen eighties. And with some stronger parameters in there for the other companies that wanna come in and maybe do work here. And there's, you know, there's fees for, for the cuts that they do, there's fees for boring. Um it also says that they're not allowed to go lower than twenty-four feet, but. Below the surface, twenty-four feet, twenty-four inches below the surface. So that way they don't hit our water sewer lines. So we're presenting this to you guys to give your thumbs up or thumbs down, um that we can start using this permit.
Just, just very hard to drive them, yeah.
Thank you. My amendment is, this is just kind of broad up, is, you know, what about the rest of our ordinance? Is there any way for us to, to try to look into or even think about, you know, whether it works? You know, what's gonna bite us next, I guess, is what, you know, because I, I've kind of tried to sort of purge myself, and I, I haven't seen anything that's jumped out at me, but. I'm not an expert.
Yeah, I, we can, it's just who's gonna do it when, yeah.
Business license ordinance. You can enter business and regular business license. Okay. Yes, second, my little favor, say aye.
Question, if you mind, a bit of discussion there, I can just pass that. Uh, I wasn't able to see one of those, uh, that document online.
Hey Scott, can you tell me who you are? I know who you are.
Sure, I'm a national property owner. Um, I wasn't able to see that ordinance online and I heard Sandy say something like. You can't go below twenty-four inches. And that strikes me because I don't know if any of the utilities have have had a chance to review this and that's Duke Energy or. You know, all your your gas companies. But that strikes me as a problem for them and actually in some cases it would be impossible for them to install infrastructure under that rule. And so I would, I would recommend, I know you just passed this, I tried to get up here before you grew it, but. I would recommend that you, you know, I do consulting for broadband related work. Uh, in my, in my day job, but I would recommend you run that by some of the utilities because. They may have emergency work that would go below twenty-four inches. Um, they may have other concerns about their ability to make repairs, installations, I know there are. Still areas of the town, in fact, most of the town is still lacking fiber. And so what you don't want to do here. I think I may understand what you're trying to do is just update it, but what you don't want to inadvertently do is. Make it possible to provide water sewer, I assume this applies to water and sewer.
Twenty-four inches only for IT and uh, says. IT or fiber or cables or base or cable. Cables are gonna be shallow and all the utilities are your property, but I can see if you're going underneath the street. And you want to get underneath the water main or get any gas main, electric, you could go. You know, if I was working on flooring through for putting the fire out to tunnel and then, you know, I'm not wanting to go below all that and just.
Be safer probably.
So you can't do that. I think what it's wanted to do is to deep cuts when they go across the water or sewer and. The the gas and the.
Totally understand and I think, you know, having not been able to review that document yet, I don't know if your utilities have. Again, even your water utility, so you isolated that particular item to only a certain site and exclude water and sewer from that responsibility. Understood. I think you're trying to protect your infrastructure, but you also, I think, have to remember those are. Separate from the town government, you know, your utilities are, so they would in some cases be impacted by what you're proposing and you guys love. They have all that in-house, but a lot of your external utilities, Duke Energies, et cetera. This may concern them significantly, may prevent them from doing things they need to do, even in cases of emergency. Not having seen it, maybe you've got some emergency pauses or pauses that say existing infrastructure that is cut. By an accident, say, which happens all the time. What are they supposed to do with those? Will you not issue a permit ever again? Do they have to put it on the line, you know, what? There's just some questions I have from that space and so I want to encourage you to really be careful.
So there are, there's a spot here called under additional conditions and that's where Phyllis. Would work with them or rather work them to say, okay, well, we actually have this situation for a what's going to work the right way. So they can put that in there and we can examine the area where they want to go. And they know, they would be able to allow certain things that go to do like a. A little bit of a change to the twenty-four inches, for instance. If that's for that area.
The other thing is, uh, you know, and and Scott, we've not met, I'm really glad you're on the council and I understand you've got a lot of experience. In the engineering realm and so you you brought up one example of where not being able to go below twenty-four inches. It's challenging, right? And and it's actually not a very common situation you're describing, it's actually very common that you're gonna.
It's real common.
Uh, and so, you know, I I would encourage you, invite you, um. To engage other folks who do this every day, these are critical resources, right? These are things that if you don't have power and even now if you don't have broadband. And and again, the whole town is is essentially lacking in fiber right now as as a. Somebody who's worked on that for a long time, I know is painful and I have problems down and so. You do not want to make that impossible for sure. Uh, and in many cases, knowing the town like I do, it's impossible to go on poles. If you look at full around town, they have loaded the mess and they're very old. And so you're most likely to attract an underground type installation of fiber and that is going to require. Many cases going below twenty-four inches and totally understand and it's difficult to locate your your utilities, every square inch of them. Okay, maybe you've solved that problem since I was here, but it's very common that a small utility, uh, medium sized utility. Is still trying to find some of that ancient uh, infrastructure. And so when you do have underground construction in the town and you're unable to pinpoint where that infrastructure is. It causes problems across the state, right? You you are not alone. This is completely normal, unfortunately. But what's important is that you provide a. A form of communication ahead of time and 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 you communicate with those utilities that says, you know, look, we're not exactly sure where it is. Through here, we think it's here, be careful and if you have a problem, the town's gonna cover that. Not the utility that is trying to deploy critical infrastructure. So I would, I would ask that you consider. Hosting and just even like a technical committee, Sandy with DRC when you do projects. Changing things like utility, this is all your utilities, right? Uh, Brown County Water included, I don't know if they've had input, I don't know if Duke Energy, South Central N R M C, AT&amp;T. Uh, Indiana GAPS has had any input whatsoever into this document or been able to review it to see if there's a problem, but. I I'm just here to ask you to, um. Maybe I'll just say retract your prior vote, hold a meeting with the utilities that are critical. That are investing probably millions of dollars that will now have to comply with this and it sounds like it's been forty years since it's been updated, so. You were just to touch base, hey utilities, I know we haven't done anything different in forty years, but. And and this is commonly overlooked in local governments because we don't see your talk to these utilities much until there's a problem. Uh, but they are actually part of the solution, so I would just ask for you that, and maybe Scott would be a great person to just.
The, uh, you know, the twenty-four inch provision, only IT and fiber or cable. And we could have another, uh. Provision that that in special cases, if you need to go below that, you have to have that approved by.
So this, this allows for. This allows for tweaking with the the utility we just needed. The starting point.
Uh, and I think it's a great start.
I got a specific example of whether we go under twenty-four, they can get the twenty-four, but they don't have a cart launch. Cause that's what happened with our structure, because they had cart launch and it was a fiasco. And and even not our district, they just.
They hid gas lines.
We're also having to get fiber and they came through and now we still got those ugly white lines. It seemed like they put them every place they possibly could.
Hand pole was a marker.
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about the the. Utility location, that's to prevent damage to their infrastructure and I think it's what you're trying to protect against as well.
Place and they they gave no concern about aesthetics whatsoever, I mean, it was just, you know, and so, so. The, the way I read this is that what your concerns, they have a chance to to identify spots.
And not having been able to look at that, I I'm sure I may have other concerns, cannot positize. The large utilities that serve our town outside of water and sewer. And I assume you consulted with your own water and sewer utility on this. And and I think the other utilities are equally important, if not more important in some cases, power. Need a chance to contribute because what you're trying to do here. I I mean, I, if I were aware of the perfect permitting process in the state, I would hand it to you right now.
This doesn't include.
Oh, it is since pounds.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I I've got a lot to learn on what you just passed, I'm interested in it, um. I think the other thing that catches my ear and I actually I think where possible. Staying under twenty-four inches, Scott would be interested in your input on this, I don't want to take too much of your time, but this is. One of those things that's commonly kind of glossed over by local governments in my work and it can cause nightmares, okay? And so staying twenty-four inches of under the surface. I mean, if you're putting in, you know. Uh, it it can cause problems, okay, for additional disruptions by even homeowners, that's not very deep. In fact, that's the deepest you're allowing, so does that mean they can bury a three inches below the surface and a guy. Kid out there with a toy shovel, they're gonna, you know, and so usually when you're talking about the state or I find your state. Uh, rules, they have to go deeper, they require them to go deeper. Because they want them to be out of the way, let's say you're replacing a road culvert in that area, let's say you're doing ditching. If they are that close to the surface, guess what? Now the shoe's on the other foot, you're hitting their lines. And you are gonna be responsible and communications are gonna be disrupted by public safety. So, you know, be careful what you ask for there and that's why I really think you need to do. And I'm happy to join and 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 help, uh, but. I I just don't want to see you do something here that in in the interest of protecting and doing your own utility, just totally understand to your water and sewer infrastructure and your roads. But make it so that the people who are doing this work every day in your town. Are are able to function within it, right? That's what you'd want. If you want all the work, you want people to work together and you don't want damage to occur. So without talking to them.
I I assume our consultant, um, received.
Uh, yeah, that's where we got it from.
It's from another, another entity.
Such a cookie chatter.
And I can, I can see that, you know, we got, we're putting in COOX cable, fiber optic cable. And they're trying to keep those about twenty-four inches and if you're not able to do that, then you just contact the town. Tell them what you're gonna do and then we can come out and see what utilities are there, do you can come out. But I I think that's the intent, all the other utilities, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna give us a, you know, a work plan or whatever. Whatever they're gonna do, the twenty-four inches doesn't apply to any other utility except, uh, phone and fiber optic.
Okay, so it's just isolated that.
Just that one cable.
Interesting.
It could be if if it's, you know, control cable for traffic signal or anything like that, that doesn't apply either.
Have you, the fees changed at all for for the, uh, the.
Yes.
Okay, so you gotta go through a whole process to.
Yeah.
Fees, publish it, ask for comment, all that, so at that point, if you'd like to not communicate with them before you pass this, I would recommend. At least there's a chance for them to communicate with you later. Uh, I think on the, if it's just isolated to IT, you know, Nashville's a broadband ready community which waived all fees. For broadband permits, so that would apply to them, uh, but they would, if you're telling me they are gonna have a chance to see this. Reflect on it before the meeting and provide public input prior to making these changes. Then that's a cap, that that's a safety net that they can use to contribute if if they have, so appreciate your time.
Sandy, you have anything else?
Not under town administration.
Okay, town attorney is next.
I don't really have anything, thank you.
All right, Sandy, you're up again.
Writing as fast as I can, um. Comprehensive plan project, we had a steering committee meeting on Tuesday, um. Lots of input, we were working on, uh, land use maps and lots of discussion, we had two different groups. Um, so much discussion that. Our company REA wants to have another session with the group so that they can even get more input. And then, um, they would like to hold a a public event like they did. Earlier this year to get all public input, so, um. They're not rushing through it, which I really appreciate, I I'd rather them take the time and get this right. Um, instead of, well, you know, we kind of had this deadline, so the deadline is pushed back by a month, but. I'm grateful that they're taking that time. Um, the raise grant for stormwater upgrades, um. Stumbled on this, it's, um, the raise is a discretionary grant program for investments. Um, in certain infrastructures that will have significant or local regional impact. Um, these funds are authorized under the local regional assistance program in the infrastructure investment and jobs act. Known as the bipartisan infrastructure law. Anyway, it's a great grant, we can get up to twenty-five million dollars and, um, I spoke with Vice President Redd. We're, we want to do this to get money to do our stormwater master plan. Um, and this is a non-matching grant. I've already talked to ARA and they're willing to do the application for us. Dave has already talked to an engineering company that can update our master plan, um, numbers. Because it's been a couple of years, um. I don't think we have anything to lose to to apply for it, so I just need your guys' permission to move forward with that.
How much is the cost?
I don't remember, to be honest with you.
Just the only thing you pay for is the application.
For ARA to do the work, mm-hmm. And if. If we can do it, we can also possibly apply for Okra grant, which wouldn't give us as much because we we have to do a match, but. I'll take any money I can to try to fix the stormwater issue that we have, that's necessary.
Any questions? Any other questions? Second, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of his name.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next we agenda is old business. First thing is consider the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one three versus the ordinance to amend water rates and charges for the town of Nashville, Indiana. Any questions on this, comments? If I'd like to make a motion.
Those are gonna be in a first reading?
Yes, this will be the second reading.
I'm not sure, I have a second rating of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen by title number. A second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Oco's next.
Yes. So the ordinance to amend schedule rates and charges collected by the town of Nashville, Indiana. Or the use of water supply by the town of Nashville.
And now we would need a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of those name. Next is, uh, considering ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one four. An ordinance to amend the sewer rates and charges for the town of Nashville, Indiana. Uh, we would need to make motions for the second reading.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, the second reading ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one four.
Seven, seven, all right, uh, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed next. All right, uh, we need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
The ordinance twenty twenty four dash one four is an ordinance to amend sewer rates and charges for the town of Nashville.
Thank you.
So I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash fourteen, sorry.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. Uh, next to the new business. Uh, first thing on new business is. Consider the ordinance twenty twenty four dash one five, which is an ordinance regarding the Nashville Safety Board Organization and scope of duties. You want to make any ordinance? Anybody want me to quieten down or anybody?
What's that? Is this replacing the merit board that we used to have?
Yeah, yeah, since we moved to it, here's to know the safety board.
I'll make a motion to have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen by Title One.
Okay.
Mine's stuck to the other two, okay. No worries.
Uh, I'll second that motion. All right, all in favor of twenty twenty four dash fifteen? Say aye.
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 All opposed next. Okay.
Read.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen, an ordinance regarding the Nashville Safety Board Organization and scope of duties.
All right.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and have the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen by Title One. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen and ordinance regarding the Nashville Safety Board Organization and scope of duties. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen.
Also, the motion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. Okay. Next, uh, considering ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen. Uh, ordinance twenty twenty three dash fourteen amending fixing salaries and wages for twenty twenty four.
Okay, so every year at the end of each year, we go through all of the payroll and we look to see if we've had more than. So let's say we have, um, something on here that says one person, so like there's, there is a, um, job title. And it says like one or two or three, state board accounts has us, we have to list how many people were in that. Doesn't mean that we're in that position at the same time. But how many people were in that position over the year? So like the, um. So I had to go back through and make all these changes, so like the utility check on page four. If we had five in the ordinance for twenty four, we actually had seven people in in and out of that position. So you don't have seven people in that position, but you have seven in and out. So these are just the the few little changes that you can see that are highlighted.
Yeah.
And so that just, um, clears it up for the end of the year for the state board accounts.
I made a motion to have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixteen by Title One.
I'll second that motion. Any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixteen, an ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty three dash fourteen, meaning fixing salaries and wages of town officials and ordinance of town of Nashville during the year.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and. Have a reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixteen by Title One.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixteen, ordinance, and then the ordinance is twenty twenty three, fourteen, and fixing salary and wages. Town officials and employees of the town of Nashville during the year twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixteen, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. Okay. Now, next is to consider ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen, which is the ordinance amending fixing salaries and wages for twenty twenty five.
Yes.
By the law.
Yes, so twenty twenty four dash seventeen is, this is based on the budgets that you approved. And we went through all of these salaries during the whole budget cycle, so you have to have them in a salary ordinance, so they're in here now. And we do have the longevity pay, Sandy and I talked about that, um, because it was in the twenty three personnel policy. It is no longer in the twenty four personnel policy, so it has to be in the ordinance. But that's in there too, so just a little bit more clarification. And I did change, uh, a few of the, um, open salaries, like the range, we had something like that for twelve dollars still. From way back and I put fifteen in the allowance. So, okay, in the range, people are not at that range, but that is, you know, in case you would have to hire someone in. So otherwise, it's all according to your budget and your adopted. And it's also gone through the USB water sewer budgets and all that, so that's what we have.
All right. Uh, I'll make a motion to have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen by Title One.
Sorry.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. All right, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen, an ordinance fixing salaries and wages of town officials and employees of the town of Nashville during the year twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. I have a second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen by Title One.
All second motion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen, an ordinance fixing salaries and wages of town officials and employees of town of Nashville during the year twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen.
Sorry.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. Okay, next, uh, we've got council appointments, boards, and commissions. My understanding, everybody that served before, let's serve again.
There needs to be a motion on each board, is that correct?
Yep. The alcoholic beverage commission. Jim Hahn has been serving and he's willing to serve again in twenty twenty five. Yep.
Do you want to make a motion for the alcohol better commission? For Jim Hahn.
Make a motion to approve Jim Ross, the alcohol beverage commission.
Thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. All right, next is Jay Moore, the Brown County zoning board of appeals.
Make a motion to approve Jane Moore to the Brown County zoning board of appeals, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. All right, uh, animal control commissioner of Brown County. Didn't have a point for Matty Bond for a sir.
Make a motion, Matty Bond, giving another animal control condition of Brown County.
Okay. All. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed next. Next, we've got Brown County Community Correction Advisor Board, Scott Day.
Anybody else want that position?
Dave's not here.
I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to appoint Scott Dick to the Brown County Community Corrections Advisor Board, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed next.
I'll do it again. Four times a year.
Next is the Brown County Leadership Board for Dave Rudd.
Make a motion for Dave Rudd to be on the Brown County Leadership Board Management Board, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. All right, next is the Brown County Solid Waste Board, uh, for myself and Scott. We voted ourselves, go with Scott, who votes me?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Scott Dick and Wilson to Brown County Solid Waste Board, second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed next. All right. Nashville Arts Entertainment Commission.
So you had three people, their terms ended. Um, two of those people, Julie and and Melanie both would like to come back if you guys are okay with that. Emily, um, isn't able to serve again and, uh, Quentin Hiltman. Uh, put in his application, uh, to serve on this board if you guys would like.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Billy Charles, Nani Boland, and Quentin Hiltman to the National Arts Entertainment Commission Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. Next, National Park and Public Facility Corporation Food and Beverage.
Gloria Dobbs. Let me know this morning that she did not want to serve again. Um, but the other people, Tana Martin, Eli Nickel, Quentin Hiltman, and Tyra Miller would all like to serve. And, uh, Josie Gray put her name in the hat to perhaps take Gloria's spot.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tana Miller, Martin, Eli Nickel, Quentin Hiltman, Tyra Miller, and Josie Gray. Serve on the National Park and Public Facility Corporation Food and Beverage.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. Nashville Town Park Commission is next.
And this is a three-year term.
Uh, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Alicia Greedy, Mark Shields. Matty Bond, Cliff. Cressy.
Cressy.
Cressy and Tara. Passler.
Mm-hmm.
To the Nashville Town Park Commission, sorry.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. Next is National Redevelopment Commission.
The president, the council president has three appointments and the council as a whole has two. And all of those members have expressed interest to serve again next year.
All right, uh. Reappoint Victor Baumgart, Paul Park, and David Blessner. We need to go motion, I need three or two, or is one?
Uh, why don't you do a motion and then we're covered.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint the three I just named, including as well as Phil McCowen and Teresa Provan.
Certainly.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. Nashville Tree Board. Uh, all members want to start again. Elliot Burnett, Mark Shield, Amy Spalding, Monica Hudson, and Katie.
Stark.
Stark?
Mm.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to appoint those people to the Nashville Tree Board, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed next. All right, good.
This is the last one.
Nashville Safety Board. Town Council appointments, uh. For the Safety Board, so we've got Alan Brown, Rick Fox, Chuck Harper, Arlene Moffett, and Mike Rosi.
And this is a little bit more complicated. Two, two of the members get a three-year term. Two members get a two-year term and one member gets a one-year term. And they were all okay with whatever terms you assigned.
So, I say we can give, we're at the one year. He recently retired, so. We'll kind of keep that. Um, we could do Alan and Mike in two-year. And then Chuck and Arlene in the three-year. That works for everybody.
Chuck and Arlene three, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay. Make sure.
Okay. All right, so you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to be approved, uh, Alan Brown, Rick Fox, Chuck Harper. Arlene Moffett, and Mike Rosie to the Nashville Safety Board for the terms.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, yeah, thank you. Jeez, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
All opposed next. All right. Public comments? Please take the name.
Scott R. Brown, Attorney Counsel. Um, I happened to hear a Board of Assembly Appeals meeting on. Last night and the council apparently submitted a letter. Asking the board to delay their decision because you, I think I understood it right, and just in listening, that you wanted to have more time to review the conference and plan. And I was confused by that. It was a little bit unusual and, you know, as council person. Um, I I don't think what you were saying was you don't want any approvals to occur in the county, but I'm not sure what you were saying. So, uh, I'm just here to ask you what you were intending there.
Sure, really just to have more time to go over everything. I, I don't think there's many of us have any problem with anything going on, just want to be sure that. Anything needs done, proper permitting, any kind of licensing, any type of studies that need to be done, or all taken care of, comprehensive plan goes through and everything kind of just follows along. With what needs to be done for, um, you know, anything that must be done in the county, but that that it kind of goes along with the comprehensive plan, just. So when I take time, I don't like, I don't think any of us like rushing into anything. You know, that can tend to be more problematic for anybody who would come into anything. I don't want that to happen, when everything's done, I think I'm right.
Sure, and I think, I think you're inherently right, you do want to wait, or you're saying you want to wait until the conference plan is completed to go forward with projects or. Or.
Think it means halting all the projects, you kind of. Just kind of taking a breather, we're going to the holidays, love the things going on, we need to make sure that it's done correctly.
You know, the reason I'm here is as a council person and and understanding kind of economic development in the county, um, is. You know, um, uh, we also have a half-dead for the manatee request to do a, a subdivision on, we're running a park. Right, we have a comprehensive plan. In place currently. And we have, I'm sorry, what's that?
Town does not have a comprehensive.
Oh, the county.
County does.
Yeah, the town has comprehensive plan.
No, we don't.
Is that true? Well, that was mentioned.
That's true.
I mean, the county, previous councils have passed conference plan for the town.
No.
No. That was mentioned in the heels meeting last night.
So. So you don't think you have a comprehensive plan in the town? County has a comprehensive plan, which is where this, the project, one project, and I think you're, you're talking about a county project. Okay, outside of the town. And as a person on the council that has to fix taxes. For residents. And is interested in homes being built, right, for people who need them. Um, you know, it was a current county comprehensive plan in place and. We know, we know one thing even about the town, it's that comprehensive plans have been approached and never finished. And so, you know, in the county, we have one, I I'm shocked to hear the town doesn't have a comprehensive plan. I I'm absolutely shocked. Um, I'm not sure how that works out legally for you, but, so in the county though, if the town council. Is going to take a position on any project, right, which I think is what the position sounded like to me. Not moving forward. Until a comprehensive plan is approved by the county. Um, one, I mean, I I would refer to your legal counsel on this, but I don't think you can suspend current law. And due process. And stop all things from happening that would be impacted by the comprehensive plan, which includes public safety. Infrastructure, transportation, public lives, out of the record, right? I don't think that's what you're saying. I hope that's not what you're saying. It's very dangerous to say. Nothing can happen until some future unknown document. Is approved, and we have law in place now, right, that significant impacts on housing. Has just one obvious example, right, to say, uh, we're just, we just don't want to do that, right? We want to see what the next plan is, not the one that's currently in law. And as a council person, I've got serious concerns about that approach. One, I don't think it's legal at all, and I'd be happy to really like to hear what Wanda thinks about. Suspending a current law. suspending a current law for some future unknown document that doesn't exist yet, that may never, that may never pass, we already have one.
We didn't suspend the law.
What I'm saying is if you delay it, and I'm asking the council kind of what is your intention with that, is that your intention, or is it just one project, or is it all projects that can relate to the comprehensive plan, I'm just, I want to make sure we're understanding what the town council's position is and, and maybe you don't know, I don't know.
It's my understanding it was a request, it wasn't a demand by any stretch of the imagination.
What, what's your name?
Yeah.
I'm still in town. It was your, it was a request, you know, I think it's to help understand how a project like that would impact the town.
Right.
Does that make sense? So you reached out to the VCA to ask for a meeting?
They didn't have to go with the request.
They didn't have to hire it at all.
It was not a demand by any means.
Okay, so it was a request just to delay it until what time?
Frankly, it had been delayed before, I believe.
Yeah, it seems like.
So, but not by the town, or not by the county, it was delayed by the petitioner.
Yes, there's been plenty of time.
Well, only one time was it delayed previously, so we needed to have more time.
Oh, so this was give the town more time to review the application, or, because it's the VCA's job to review county applications.
It was the town's ac- action, asking that it be delayed so that they would have more time to review the entire situation.
And so you've received the packet for the project and you're having meetings to review that VCA project, is that what I'm, am I understanding?
No, I don't think so, I think, I think we've already said what we were doing. We asked to have it delayed for until the next month.
Just to see what's needed.
Just to see, that's right, we didn't ask to have it delayed for, and I think you're taking it out of context.
Okay, so it's just the one project, it's not all the projects now, it's just the one.
It's just, it's just the one that was before the VCA last night, and that letter made it very clear that that's what it was about.
Okay. Okay, so you want, it, it was a thirty-day request and, and it's so you can review all the documentation and and?
It's a thirty-day request.
Thirty-day request.
That's right.
Okay. Just to delay it, or is there action on the council that will occur as a relation to the county project that's, that's underway and?
I, I don't really think that, that that was contemplated.
I'm just asking you to be careful about you know, county projects, and I don't have an opinion one way or the other on that particular project. It's when that kind of thing is, is, is expanded and I'm glad you're narrowing it down to just this one project and not all projects until the county comprehensive plan is completed. Because again, that includes everything we do as government, and affects all of our taxpayers, including taxpayers of the town who pay county taxes, right, and so, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
The, what's the schedule on the comprehensive plan, is it the end of this month?
For the county? And I do not know.
It's town. I mean, we're talking.
So our plan will be done by December.
No, no, our comprehensive plan will not be done by the end of December. It's, it's got pushed out, um, because we're going to work some more on the land use things, they're going to have a public hearing in February. So I'm thinking like maybe March, it'll go before the area plan commission for their, you know, stamp of approval or recommendations for changes or whatever, then that will come to the town council. So I, I, I don't want to March, March, April, yeah.
And the last time I think the town tried to do one, prior to the one I'm aware of, it's already passed, it, it didn't pass, cancel, right? Hundred thousand dollars or something, and it came to the council back in the nineties. And it didn't pass, and so, there's no guarantee that it can, I guess on the town, are you also, are you pausing projects in the town until the comprehensive plan is done as a town taxpayer, just curious? Or are you, are there delays there, are you anticipate, anticipating a comprehensive new planning, or are, are you moving forward as usual?
There's no, there's no plans that I'm aware of that are happening in the town.
No, I mean, the comprehensive plan is under review right now, apparently you don't even have one, which is, I'm still not sure that's right, but as projects come up for you.
We don't, we do not have, let's just make that clear, we absolutely, Scott, we really don't have.
Yeah, because your zoning ordinance has to be predicated on a comprehensive plan.
Yes.
I, that's a, I guess a minor technicality, so, um, but it's so, because you don't have a comprehensive plan, are you are you, are you, are you delaying anything, you anticipate kind of?
We don't have any projects to even discuss or consider right now.
Okay.
There's, there's nothing, it, it was really just nothing right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, can I certainly grab and borrow one of your graphs of that utility ordinance for just to get it, or maybe I didn't even have it.
The right way.
Yeah.
You know, that would take some.
Yeah, you would mine or the documents, going documents to that.
My personal.
Yeah, I don't think I can give.
You want that?
Did you get one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Jimmy, uh, you'll state your name for the.
Julie Solson. Um, just piggybacking off it, what he said, you guys responded on the uh you're not going to do any projects in town, well, I know even this week you had um you had, was it, was it a DR, a DRC hearing? So there are DRC requests, there's design reviews, there's things that that could be impacted by a comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan may call for something different than we have today. So if you're really wanting to get to a comprehensive plan, maybe you should stop everything. But um, I think, I think our product is being um tailored like bullseye on it, um, I don't think it's much fair. Um, and, and, and if you read the letter that was sent last, yesterday at three o'clock, which was the last hour where you could even post this, um, even send it to the, the county um pending board. Um, it doesn't say that it's going to be a thirty-day. It says, respectfully request that this matter be tabled again so the comprehensive plan may be considered relative to this request. Well, the next meeting is, 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 is January twenty ninth. This won't, your comprehensive plan is not going to be ready by January twenty ninth, so I don't see how, what relevance this has, even if you it doesn't have any relevance, it's not going to be done. Was the point. Um, so I don't know who requested this originally, but they didn't think it through, I don't think it was you guys, maybe it was. But this doesn't seem like something you guys would just think of. This is suspect to me. Um I was going to talk about a different matter also. But I'm going to withhold my comments on it because of the letter from your attorney advising me not to talk about it. So that's the, I'm going to talk about it for right now. Um Uh, the other topic is, I would, I'd like to know who added the annexation and base rate multiplying language to the previous um sewer ordinance draft that um, that didn't pass today, that was in the draft. Do you know how that language got in there? You know how that language got in there? Was, was it discussed? Because I can't see any record of it being talked about. Um, it's just all of a sudden it's there. Um, and that's the highlighted, I just want to highlight the portions on the the uh, the draft that was posted on, on the internet for the annexation portions and the um base rate multiplying um language.
Well, we didn't even include in the, it's not even part of it anymore.
I, I know that, but I, I would like to know who put it in and when was discussed. Um, because I don't think it's, it's right to have language in there that's not been talked about and reviewed and discussed, I know, I thank you for removing it, but I guess the right thing to do. I'm not arguing with that, I'm just, I'm very curious about who actually put that language in there without anybody reviewing it first. Who do you think that? I don't think it was any of you guys, and I don't think it was the utility service board. And where do you think the reason was so? Um, it was probably put in to increase the base rate for, for the um, for folks who have um, multiple dwellings or multiple rooms, like they have a a guest room downstairs, so then they're going to get double the base rate. Um, it impacts hotels, it impacts a lot of things that were not discussed, if even, you could take that language and say, okay, there's a cooking facility in, in your basement, that's a biker race. Now you're going to get double. Oh, if you have a living area outside and you're on your porch with a gas grill, that's a cooking fixture, now your base rate got doubled, who's going to police that? Um, I don't think the language was well thought out and it wasn't communicated in a discussion, to my knowledge. Um, so I've been, I was very curious about who, it seems like it was a mistake, I mean, it would affect my businesses greatly as well, yeah, I don't know that it's a conspiracy. I will just have it taken out now, so that's good, it is good, it's taken out, so thank you, but I'm, I'm just very curious how that got in there to begin with. Without any discussion. And it was, but, and then I thought it was being a change, it was highlighted, so whoever put it, whoever put it on the internet knew that it was a change.
It sounds like it was some kind of proposal and discussions to make that language that got in there, I mean, it is, there is a lot of documentation that goes through a lot of process to get there. So I don't know that somebody's sticking it in to screw business owners or something like that, I certainly did not take it that way. It certainly is something that I am glad has been moved as well. But I don't think anyone's out to get us.
And what about the annex, the forced annexation? You think they did the same thing about that? Explain that to me. Well, the forced annexation is part of, part of the change that was requested on the draft. So if you, if you have a, if you have sewer, sewer access currently and you're out of town and you sell your home, the person who buys it has, has, is forced to be annexed into town.
I think it was, it was if so, so let's say, let's say for instance, let's use Music Center because they're right on the other side.
Yes.
If they were to sell and whoever bought from Music Center wanted to use town sewer.
Correct.
Then that, that proposed language would say, you can't, you have to be part of town.
If you want to use a sewer. It's not a forced annexation.
If you want sewer, but if you, if you have sewer.
If you want to use the town sewer.
If you want to use the town sewer, you don't have to use a town sewer.
But that, that was also removed.
Right.
Because that was just part of, I think, proposed language, that's the same as the.
Yeah, I think in the process of coming up with some of this language, I, I can see how things that were left in or, you know, proposals get real down. Things, you know, get missed or real left, and again, I don't, it's some conspiracy. I mean, I think so.
Well, good then. We've been playing a question.
I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know the answer. Doesn't mean why not, does the town manager or the town attorney know who might have put it in?
I don't know.
No.
The answer, no? They don't know, do, 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 everyone, you know?
I don't know.
You know?
You'll have to talk with them.
Very aggressive council.
Right.
We, we did talk about the annexation part, I think we fully noted that, and then when that was in there, then we decided to take that out. And the good thing that I I hate to say, I, I don't want to kick my palm out and have to target another fee, so I'll be sorry too. But uh, yeah, I, I, I remember talking briefly about, I just assumed that our consultant put it in or somewhere else, but yeah, I would like to, I would say we, we cut that, cut those sections out and it's streamlined and.
Yeah, it could have been proposed. That's a good possibility, it's a good point.
Might be good to figure that out for a future reference. So it doesn't happen again.
So then you don't want, don't get taken out?
No, the things that, that you, that you don't know about are snuck in and get voted on without anybody even knowing.
Someone will often say.
Yes, yes, it was the right thing to take it out, absolutely the right thing to take it out, you guys did the right thing in taking it out. I just don't want to see next month, next year. Who knows what ordinance comes by and some language that you guys have not seen, not discussed, gets slipped in without your knowledge.
What he's saying there was discussion. And this, and, and to be quite honest, all these ordinances and language and the consultant, it is a mountain of information.
Oh, yeah.
There are mistakes that are going to be made in the future. It's, it's, it's inevitability. But the important thing is that they're recognized and they're corrected and they work. So I'm not really sure what's wrong.
It almost didn't get caught. I just, I just want you guys to be careful.
It was caught, what's, it never went through the first reading.
Yes, it did.
Mm hmm, it went through the first reading. Mm hmm. Okay, but it was caught after that and we recognized it, so.
And like I said, it's, it's a messy business, there's a mountain, I mean, the packet we get here is huge. There are things that are going to fall into the cracks, there are language that's going to be missed, and that's why you have multiple reads. That's why you don't adopt it on the first read, the second reading, there's time for him, but there's time for the community to look at it, there's time for the consultants to check it, and like I said, nobody here is perfect. And things are going to happen like that in government, it's, it's messy. And it's mountainous, and there's a lot of information that comes and goes. And they, quite honestly, I can see how something that was proposed and, you know, could be a simple, somebody attempted to lead that, they're going through it and maybe they hit lead, didn't lead. So again, I don't think it's a conspiracy, especially since it was caught. And I'm trying to sneak it through or something.
I'm not even saying it's a conspiracy, between those one individual or two. I don't. Um, going back to the letter from yesterday. Should I be expecting to see another letter of, from you guys to try to table the, my project again, because obviously the the comprehensive plan won't be done by January twenty ninth. We were caught off guard big time, we had no heads up from you guys that you want to even consider table this. It was a surprise. In the meeting, they didn't even mention my name, our, our, our hearing was the fifth. We're expecting it to be an hour into the meeting, they mentioned old business and there should be a, a cause number, file number, whatever, and the um, and I didn't even know it was mine, because the whole business is the first hearing we had, but it was on, previously they just tabled it for this one. And we don't, um I didn't know it was tabled. I heard it was um, a letter from Wanda Jones about the town wanting to table it. I didn't even know it was mine. They didn't ask for anything, they just voted to table it and we're done, my attorney was I, I hired my attorney to represent, we were ready to go. And I had supporters um ready. Everyone was, was ready to go, and then at the last minute, the last hour, after three o'clock, they pulled it forward. At, after three o'clock, they got the email, didn't even tell me about it because I didn't have time, so I'm starting to have blindsided. Um, that just doesn't feel good. Should I be expecting another letter? Are we done?
I, I, I honestly, I can't, I don't want to say yes or no to anything, I mean, I would guess one way, but can't say what's going to happen in the future.
Is it because a small portion of our property is inside the town limits? Because this is why I want to be out of the town, to avoid.
Well, it's right next to town, I mean, there is some consideration with the town and the county when you're talking about properties that overlap, especially a project like this. There is considerations between the town and county, okay, and a lot of people I've talked to in town and in the county have concerns about how those things will interact. And I don't think that's that unusual to try and make sure that this is all correct.
So have you also been proposing the reverse, that you wait to do things in town until the, the county comprehensive plan is completed? So have you also been proposing the reverse, that you wait to do things in town until the the county comprehensive plans completed, because there is some overlap? Maybe if there was something like this that was in town that bothered the county, yeah. Definitely.
That might continue, yeah.
Very. They were asked this. Absolutely. I I wish I could have worked with you guys first. It was a blindside. Well, we have time now. Talk to me. Talking about things you want me to do. I'm willing to work with you guys. I'm pretty much a book of book. Those things I'm not gonna discuss today. I wish I could. Because I don't. I want there to be good communication. Hope you understand my heart on the better on 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 things. Um, I want to restore trust between my family and the town. Um. Again, I'm not gonna talk about it. But my heart is that that we can have peace between our family and the town. Do you have any questions? Or sit down?
Thank you, Jimmy. Bill?
Um, Bill McCann, resident, uh, just as a point of clarification, um, I attended the uh, uh, board exonerating appeals meeting. As a private citizen. And um. Perhaps the order of events was. Not properly observed, I'm unsure. Uh, who who is the? The chair of that board is John.
Dil Silver.
What's his last name?
Dilberger.
Dilberger, correct. And he said at the outset of the meeting, uh, I there have been two. Events today that have impact on this first order of old business, which is in fact was identified as the. As the Tilton property. And I'd like to get that out now before we get into anything else, and whether that was wise or not, I don't know. Um, however, he said, um. We we were advised at three o'clock this afternoon that our attorney would not be present at the meeting. And that has a big impact on how we or should proceed. Plus, we received a letter from the um. Lawyer for the town council. Uh, requesting uh that uh we delay consideration. Um, so they took the first one under advisement immediately and and all. John said, um, I'm not in favor of proceeding on that particular item. Uh, without legal counsel, and in fact, the Tiltons. As we expected, had their legal counsel there as well. Um. And the other four immediately agreed, and there was a vote, and they said, okay, we're going to table consideration of that appeal. Um, because we do not have legal counsel, and therefore defer to the next meeting, which is January twenty nine. That, in fact, is the reason why it was not considered last night. So it wasn't the town by us now. And in fact, as. The as the room empty, after that. Uh, I asked the the board. What about the second consideration? Does this mean that you will consider uh the town's um request? At the January twenty ninth meeting? And they said. We're not sure. Which is perfectly general. But anyway, this there was no. Substitute or. Anything uh out of order with their. Their process of just saying, we want legal counsel, inform we can see on this matter. As a result, that whole thing was resolved. Well before it would normally have been in the course of the meeting, and there I know there were people who were going to come later just for that specific. Topic. In fact, I ran into their lawyer in the parking lot as I was leaving, and I said, well. Talk to Jimmy, but it's been tabled. He said it has, and he said, gosh, I wish I knew. So anyway, it was one of those situations that comes up. Uh, I think that it was perfectly innocent on all sides, but um. That's the decision they made, and that's why.
Okay.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, any, oh, Amber. Okay.
I am Jimmy and the Tilton's mom, and also the USB, and because I had that that board. Um. The letter that Jimmy got today says, please be advised that the undersigned purpose is the town council of Nashville. Hearing receipt of your communication, we will be meeting a private session to discuss the threatened litigation during the holidays. In the meantime, kindly ask us clients to refrain from attempting to discuss the situation with any members of the town council, and no other utility service board, except and only Mrs. Phil. She hasn't acknowledged her concept of interest in a matter. And has stepped away from her role regarding the same, whilst requests that your clients do not communicate with any town employees on this matter. Thank you for the professional courtesy. And in the, in light of courtesy. There's been so many attempts to try to talk. With. The board, members of the board. The interactions that. Jimmy has had in particular with Sandy Jones. Especially these last few months have been very, very challenging. On November the twelfth. When he came to discuss a pressure issue at the Grandwood Suites. Sandy interjected herself in the conversation and said, oh, by the way, Jimmy, you're not going to be able, if you plan on connecting to. The sewer for the travel trailer park. You are gonna have to be annexed into town. He called me about that, and I said, we have. Class two users all over the place that are in the town of Nashville. They pay a higher rate. It has nothing to do with annexations. Sandy doesn't know what she's talking about. So. And we had, we had the first reading of the of the sewer ordinance um on November the twenty first. And I had assumed that everything the USB had asked for in the way of that ordinance was included. In that ordinance, we had only discussed two changes. The the rate increase and the the increase of the penalty for um excessive strength. Um. Substances being put into the sewer system. That was it. So after the second reading. Um, at the ABC meeting, there was a. And a remonstrator against their project that got up. And uh. For one of the two things she said. That this ordinance right here says. That if their project is hooked up under the city sewer, that they will be, they have to be annexed into town, so the county has no jurisdiction here. And I thought. I mean, in the swirl of the moment, I'm like, what? And wasn't really thinking about it. I was on a Wednesday, I think, following Sunday, I'm like. What in the world was she talking about? I've never heard of anything like that anywhere. The USB hasn't discussed it. I've been at numerous town council meetings, not all of them. I could listen to them all, but I've never heard anyone talk about any of this stuff. Is that is that even true? So I thought, well, I'll just get online and I'll look at the ordinance and see what she's talking about. Imagine my surprise when I see this ordinance that I had just stood up to defend. Had extra paragraphs in it that no one had talked about. Basically, addressing. Things that would affect them greatly, as well as most of you on the board. It would affect me greatly, but particularly travel trailers was listed. In in this language, very odd. Where did that come from? No, you would not have known it if I didn't bring it to your attention. It would have been passed. That that'd be the first reading. Nobody knew anything about it, so I, you know, made haste so that it was brought out into the open before the public hearing. And it did get fixed, and I thank you for that very much. Um, but there. And this is not the only situation, and as many of you know. Um, there was a filing for, and it don't mean against them. On twelfth of February, which was a legal proceeding. That was in the newspaper, sits in the county record, it has salacious statements in it. And it was filed without any of you knowing about it. The USB was listed as a plaintiff. We didn't know anything about it. And the same woman in the zoning hearing. Was flashing that document as well, basically testifying to these people can't be trusted. Because look right here, they can't get along with the town of Nashville. Please. We have another situation coming down the pipe with an easement. And nobody wants to talk. What it feels like to me, there there. Nineteen seventy three, they had to go to the to the Monroe County courthouse to pull out documents from the court. Were the first time in the domain of this file against the grandfather for the sewage treatment plant where it is. There was an easement for a treatment plant location. There was also an easement for an access road to the treatment plant. And an easement for a sewer line across the farm. They're very specific easements. So at some point along the way, and also in that court process. There were, um, the thing is called free holders that the court asked to. Uh, they were basically appraisers that were appraising the value of all those those parcels, the four acres for the treatment plant, the access road. And then the sewer easement. So these three different appraisers got together specifically finding the value. Of an easement for an access road, the value of an easement for the sewer that passes across the farm and through the creek. And the value for the property that was taken for the sewage treatment plant. Please, don't act bored with me.
I'm not I'm not bored with you, but I think you are. I I have gone through this, I have gone through the file as well, and I think that what you were saying. Is in essence, not totally correct. If you wanna say that.
Say, please hear what I have to say. So right now, with this wastewater treatment project, there is no sewer easement for the access road. There is a sewer that was put in there. We don't know when. It was not put there in nineteen seventy three. There was no need for one. That's why they didn't ask for the sewer easement along the access road. So at some point in time, the sewer line was put in. They never got an easement for a sewer line. So right now, it's a prescriptive easement because it's been there for so long. But with the new wastewater treatment that project, which I signed off on the plans back here for eighteen point seven million dollars. Has a part of the plan is to bury the tile that everybody has seen running across the road. Numerous times, Jimmy has asked for a copy of the plans to find out whether or not they needed any further easements. Are you sure you don't need any more easements? And he couldn't even see the plan. Sandy would not let him look at the plans, saying that they were protected under homeland security or whatnot. And so finally, graciously, a couple of town council members. Um, insisted that he have an opportunity to look at the plans, and sure enough, there's a new sewer line running all along the road. And all he's asking. Is for some good faith conversation about this situation. Right now, the family is feeling forced because you won't talk. Into taking legal action, which we do not want to take. There there's no, right now, there is no recourse being offered except to cease and dismiss. Nobody wants to do that. We've got an eighteen point seven million dollar project on the line here. SRF finds out that you guys haven't, and I don't know, but it looks to me like you don't have what you need. And I would urge you to have the conversation. This does not have to get pushed. It feels like. The town attorney and the town manager are pushing them to do something drastic that will make them look terrible to the community. We don't want that. Please, I I I plead with you. Please have conversation. Come to the table, talk about this. Listen to what you have to say about the way they've been treated, especially. By Sandy Jones and her cooperate, her relationship that she has with Wanda. Wanda filed this eminent domain lawsuit at the bidding of Sandy Jones from what Wanda told him. And this is not, it was an illegal action, and it is in the court, it is in the courthouse, it was in the newspaper, and it could damage their reputation. Forever.
Can I ask you a question? What happened with the eminent domain?
It did get dismissed, but it's still there.
And why do you think, why do you think it was filed?
Because that because they hadn't gotten the easement, and they were running out of time with SRF. They hadn't done their.
So it was a common sense thing to do in case it didn't work.
No, it was not. I began talking about their new to discuss this with with, I started talking about it at the USB meeting in August. Of twenty twenty three.
I understand.
And it got pushed and pushed and pushed and pushed and pushed until.
Well.
They read they, the orders of it did not get a letter that they could possibly even sign until the tenth of February. They were given until the following Monday to sign it, and it was already in escrow. They were not able to sign it because it was already escrowed and was sailed. This would never have happened if there had been proper con- proper conversation and proper things done by your town attorney. She did not do the necessary homework to get this laid out right. All those months from August until February. Things were not done correctly until they got pushed to the point where you would sue so low as to file a lawsuit against a citizen for eminent domain. And use language in that suit that had been provided by them as their agreement and stating in that suit. That they, this is proof that there can't, that that this is what we said. The language that was in that lawsuit was stuff they provided as as their agreement with the town of Nashville to discuss, and in the lawsuit, it says, this is what we proposed and they refused. I'm telling you, this is a shambles, but it doesn't have to continue down that road. If you would just please talk. And make things right.
And could you provide us with a copy of the part or Jimmy a copy of that easement description, the other thing that I've seen is the property description? It doesn't say that, you know, we grant you full access and we're purchasing the easement or purchasing right, but all I've seen is. Uh, the document that describes the legal description of the two properties, of three processes.
I think about you with the entire court case that has been named.
Whatever was filed as far as the for for either.
But it seems like it's now requiring public, meaning to get some response. We just want to talk.
George.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else? Okay. Any other business to come for the council? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we return. Thank you, everybody.